I'll go ahead and open this August 29, 2012 Agenda City Council Harbor District CDC for the city version sign. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Faleen is absent.
Thank you. With that, go to the city attorney for closed session.
Thank you. There'll be no meeting on item one on the closed session agenda. Item two will be continued to your next meeting. Item 3A will not be discussed today, so we will meet on items 3B, C, and D. Conference with real estate negotiator involving 438 South Cleveland Street under negotiations price in terms for the sale of the property. Yucca Road south of Fire Mountain Drive consisting of .74 acres under negotiations price in terms for the sale of the property. And item 3D, El Corazon, 450 acres bounded by El Camino Real to the west, Oceanside Boulevard to the south, Rancho Del Oto to the east, and Mesa Drive to the north under negotiations price in terms for the disposition of the property.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll go ahead and open this meeting. Four o'clock. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fowler.
He's here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Faleen is absent.
Hey, Madam Clerk. Consent calendar one through thirteen, please.
Consent calendar items include items four through thirteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. No public on this?
No public.
Please vote.
Mayor, I'd like to pull items four through thirteen because we haven't too short a schedule. We should discuss some stuff.
He's kidding. I know you're kidding. Motion approved, four oh.
Even though I agree with you, Jack, they'll have nothing to write about. They're going to sit through this meeting and have no quotes.
Madam Clerk, item fourteen, please.
Item fourteen is introduction of an ordinance of the city council amending chapter thirty-five of the Oceanside City Code regarding taxicabs.
Mr. Sherwood, good afternoon. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor. Very well. And council. Basically back tonight, bringing the chapter thirty-five ordinance back for your review. As of the last meeting, there was requested two changes to be added to the ordinance. One, allowing a or enforcing a ten cab limit. Second was including the every company that qualified to do business in the city to have an ADA compliant cab. We had a couple typographical errors and we've distributed a new copy of the ordinance for you to review, but those two changes have been included as you directed.
Thank you. I'll have a seat sidebar, please, and from there we'll go back. Any other public on this?
We have no public on this.
Thank you. Back to the council for action or motion.
Move approval. Or I'll second her then. I'll let her move and I'll say it.
We have a motion to second. With that, Councilmember Sanchez, do you need?
Just that, this is exactly what we had the discussion at the last meeting and this is what we directed and I've had a chance to look at it and it's fine.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please?
It's actually move introduction, right?
That's what I was just going to say. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending chapter thirty-five of the Oceanside City Code regarding the regulation of taxicabs.
Thank you very much. And this is a short thing. Madam Clerk, we're going to go with it anyhow. Fifteen through nineteen.
We need to vote on that. Need to vote on it.
I'm sure. Didn't we?
Not yet.
Oh, I remember that. Please vote. Geez. That was hot. But he does it every time.
There was a little jam in the tape, so actually we did vote, but we had to redo it for the tape.
It was moving way too fast.
Motion approved, four oh.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, any audience, too. Appreciate that. Fifteen through.
Item fifteen, under council reports. Mayor Jim Wood.
Thank you very much. Lately, we've taken these late because we've got backup. But a couple of things, if I may. There's a I'm proud that we're holding a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow for the new solar energy effects let's see, that is located in San Jose Water Reclamation Location. That's very important for Oceanside. We're moving towards being a green community and I'm very proud of it. Hope everybody enjoys the Labor Day weekend. Be safe out there, driving around. The other thing, even though it's early in the council meeting, we do this all the time. One more time, bad news in the sense that Frank Maryfield, very active in the community in his mobile home park, San Luis Rey, passed away last night and we'd like to close this meeting in honor. My thoughts and prayers go out to many of his friends and family members who he left behind. This is a real good and wonderful gentleman who is active in the community and the mobile home park on Omaha. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Item sixteen, Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Thank you. Had the opportunity to actually go on a date with my wife without my mother-in-law. She's visiting in Oregon. So we went to the free concert at Rancho Del Oto and great music. Exactly the era that I think of as music, so it was just perfect for that. We had a fly-in and car show barbecue out at the airport on Saturday. They had the, it was overcast, so there was no parachuting, but they had these remote-controlled jets and just a terrific, terrific, the car show was great. I mean, cars from every era. So it was a great time. This morning, we did Pro Kids Golf Academy out at, out next to the municipal golf course and this is going to be pretty great for our community. They will, the basis of this is to teach children to be better students, but in the reward system is to learn golf and etiquette and they learn how to shake your hand and look you in the eye. And I think there's a great benefit to the community for manners and etiquette in the public and as well as great education opportunity for the students at, I think it was Del Rio, Libby, Reynolds, Nichols, Chavez, and Fusat. All those schools will be able to participate, so pretty great. Football's in high gear, starting this Thursday and Friday. I will not be available after two o'clock for anything because I have grandkids playing football and I want to be there. And I know we've had birthdays and things like that, but I'd be here all night, reciting those days, so thank you.
Item eighteen, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Holly. You saw my grandson today. He's about the size of a large football. He's a, so we walked down to, since I live out really close to that, I've been watching that Pro Kids Golf come online the last couple of weeks as far as the grass growing and I've been watching it over the last few months and it's really a nice facility, so that's really going to be helpful. I don't know, Jack, did you go down to the one in San Diego? Yeah, and how that program really works and it really means a lot to the kids and it really inspires them to do their work. And the facility, and the mayor was there, too, about to have the computer room. They have the homework room. They have the golf simulator, which Councilmember Faleen and I both failed at, you know, so.
And we were criticized by the city manager.
Oh, yeah, so, well, that's not the first time. But it's a great facility. It's going to be really great for the kids. And the idea, and I think they have in October, they have another grand opening and then they actually, the first of the year, January, they're actually going to play rounds of golf on it. It'll be ready to go. But it's been kind of a long day for me. I got up at five o'clock this morning because I'd be down in San Diego at seven for the San Diego, Greater San Diego Chamber of Commerce. I was part of a presentation for the Young Entrepreneur Program and about trying to get the regional chamber involved in a program that I'm working with, with the San Diego County Office of Education and Maricosta College to teach kids how to create businesses. It's really a great program. I think the San Diego Chamber is going to adopt it. Hopefully, they seem very positive about it. But for the public and businesses out there, people that want to get involved in this program, next Friday at noon at the Mission Avenue Facility of Maricosta College, I think it's 1831 Mission Avenue, at their learning center there, they're going to have another presentation of the Young Entrepreneur Program. I encourage you to come. I need you to contact my office if you are coming because there's, space is limited. But I've been doing this presentation now probably for the last six months to different chambers and different community groups and I think we're coming online now, really helping these kids for the new economy. The idea that instead of just learning how to take a job, learn how to make a job. So I encourage the press, next Friday at noon, 1831 Mission Avenue, and hear the full presentation for the Young Entrepreneur Program. With that, the only other thing I have to do is Pro Kids Golf. It was a partnership with the city, which had the land, Callaway and TaylorMade. So, you know, always thank the sponsors. So I'd like to thank Callaway and TaylorMade for coming into town and building that facility and it's a really nice place. So that's it. Thank you.
Item nineteen, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Holly. Well, one of the things that was really special that I attended was the Oceanside International Film Festival that was at the Star. And it was a red carpet affair and we have several actors from Oceanside and I got to meet some of the younger actors, really fantastically talented young folks. It was great. And of course, during the course of the international, Oceanside International Film Festival, our own Promise Ye was recognized for her work on the American dream of owning a mobile home. So congratulations to the young promise for your work. And that kind of leads me into the next thing that I wanted to do and that is Chris Gao, Omaha's president, that's the Oceanside Manufactured Homeowners Alliance, Inc., sent out an email about Frank Maryfield and it was, it was a wonderful email and I wanted to go ahead and read it since we do have a little bit more time today. It starts, "A little after midnight, our beloved Frank left us. God must have needed a room addition or someone to start Omaha in the heavens. Frank will be forever known as a grandfather of Omaha. Over the years, he worked endlessly for causes that affected and affected our mobile home lifestyles. He never gave up and continued to the end believing in the fight for rent control. I spoke with Frank on Monday and he was still working, never giving up on what he believed in. His never-ending devotion to Omaha will never be forgotten, nor will Frank just being Frank, a special person to all. It has been my friendship and direction with Frank over the years that has helped me to be the person I am and the leadership I have had with Omaha. I will continue to be the person I am, knowing that Frank will always be looking over my shoulder. Carrie asked me to notify people and she also started, stated in about a month, there will be a celebration of Frank's life. She also said that she is surrounded with family at this time and would appreciate some family time. I told her that she and the family were in all of our prayers and our thoughts. Rest in peace now, our dear friend Frank." Chris Gao, Omaha President. See you soon, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, let's go to get closed session report from our city attorney, please.
Thank you. The council met in closed session to discuss items 3B, C, and D. There was no meeting on item one, no meeting on item two, and no meeting on item 3A. Item 3B is real property negotiation involving the property at 438 South Cleveland Street under negotiations or price in terms for the sale of the property. There's no reportable action at this time. Item 3C, property Yucca Road, south of Fire Mountain Drive consisting of .74 vacant acres under negotiations price in terms for the sale of property. Again, no reportable action. And finally, item 3D, property is the El Corazon Park. Property under negotiations or price in terms for the disposition of the property and again, no reportable action at this time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, item twenty-two, please.
Item twenty-two is Mayor Wood's appointments to or motions for removal from some or all of the city's advisory groups.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, as you well know, these come out a week in advance. I'll make a motion to appoint these four individuals to the committees and commissions.
Second.
Thank you. I'll take on that. Any communication from the public?
No communication.
Back to the council. We have a motion. Second. Councilmember Kern, please.
I just want to commend the mayor on appointing Jeremy Jengus to the Utilities Commission. Jeremy's was actually the base utility, facilities officer that actually managed all their water utilities out there. So I think that's a great pickup for us. He did retire from them, I think, a month ago. He's now, well, he was always an attorney. Now he's in private practice in Orange County, but he lives in Oceanside. But it's great knowledge to have on our Utilities Commission, have somebody of Jeremy's caliber that has actually sat on the San Diego Water Authority. So anyway, with that, I just commend on that one.
Thank you, sir. Please vote.
Motion approved, four oh.
Madam Clerk, I got to say, this is very rare here. We're going to have to adjourn until five o'clock to do the second phase of this and very little is on that one, but anyhow, I have a few left and time's certain, so we'll adjourn until five o'clock. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. This is the second part of the city council meeting from five o'clock on. It was a short agenda items, quite a few were taken care of earlier, so we'll move forward for some of these. First off, you have a phone or a cellphone pager. Put it on vibrate. We'd appreciate it. We have some great people here today to do a few things and the Humane Society. With that, Holly, could you set it up for us?
All right. If you could all please stand at this time for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And with us this evening for the invocation, we have Pastor Michael Openshaw of Lighthouse Christian Church.
Thank you for the honor of this and this invitation and I reciprocate. You're all invited to our church anytime at Lighthouse. Would you pray with me, please? Gracious Lord, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for another day of life and putting us in this beautiful place. We thank you for these dedicated servants who have devoted their lives to making a difference in their community. We pray that you give them a good evening of being able to tackle the issues at hand, to work together for the common good, to find common ground, to agree on what is best for this community and its people, to overcome any divisions or personal opinions. And Lord, we just thank you again that we have an opportunity to live in such a beautiful place and we honor you for that. So thank you for this evening. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
And tonight, leading us in the pledge of allegiance, we have some youth from Lighthouse Christian Church with us. Giselle Bone. Jacqueline Coe. Peter Coe. Ashley Kerr. Alexis Kerr. Jackson Bell. Brian Galanis. Stephanie Galanis. Gillian Cardinal. Jared Cardinal. PJ Smith. And Cameron Smith.
First, before we start on this, what a lovely group to be here today and we thank you from your church, coming out on a beautiful sunny day here in Oceanside in Southern California. We thank you. The other thing I want to say, parents, you can move wherever you want to take pictures. You don't have to stay up there. With that, who's going to take the mic for the pledge?
All right. Pastor, we're going to call.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's get a picture. We have to tighten it up. You got that side. I got this side. Tighten it up a little bit. I think the wide angle camera's not going to handle it.
Let's move out wherever you want. Pastor, I think we made good-looking bookends, don't you? Thank you all. Let's hear it for him for being here.
For our first presentation this evening, we have pet of the month and we'd like to call forward at this time, Okie Wills, who's with the San Diego Humane Society and SPCA.
Pastor, this is a great church dog. See? He was saying, "Praise the Lord, I hate him."
I think the clapping is making her a little nervous, so if we could pause off on the clapping. This is Elsa. She actually is a very sweet, outgoing girl. She's about two years old, loves treats. And I brought her today because she's actually our adoption superstar. And what we do is we choose a special dog once a month or so. You don't like Peter. Maybe we can go this way. And they get chosen just based on their demeanor, normally very sweet and social. She's just a little nervous. And what I wanted to do was read for you what one of the counselors has to say about her, if possible. Can you hold that for me? Thank you. So our adoption fee is just $25. That's the same of all our adoption superstars. And then even when a new animal is crowned adoption superstar, their adoption fee remains $25. So according to Ashley, Elsa's perfect day would consist of a game of catch and playing in the water. We have a fabulous video of her playing in a baby pool, followed by snack time and then snuggling on the couch with a bowl of treats. So you could see that she loves her treats. So she's very good at
Trained.
Responding to the treats.
Oh, she's trained.
And we also want to let everyone know that we have a new socializing event that once a month, we go to different parks and hiking trails around the North County. It's called Wagon Walk and we're inviting the community to come out with us, bring their dogs. But also it helps us get some of our dogs out into the community. So we bring one or two animals that are available for adoption, walk them around in a group. So it's a good social kind of meetup group, walking. So exercise, socializing. And you can look us up on meetup.com and find out all the information. Our next one is September 30th. It's at 9:00 a.m. But if you go to either our website or in our event calendar or you go to meetup.com, you'll find all the details there. And then at our Campus for Cats, we have a program going on now called Pick Your Perfect Price, which means you can go in, look for a cat or kitten for adoption and say what price you would like to pay for adoptions. So normally, they're 50 to 100, or 25 to 100. You could go in and get a kitten and say, you know, I'd like to donate $50 for the kitten instead of 100. Or you could say, I'd like to donate $150 instead of 100. Totally up to you. And that's going on from now until you say it's not going to be going on anymore. So we invite you out to Airport Road to take advantage of that as well.
Couple of things. She did mention Off Leash Park here in Oceanside by the Humane Society. I take my dogs all the time. It's separated from large dogs and small dogs. I go to the small box. It's like a mini stampede. Everybody's down there socializing. And with this particular dog and some of the other ones, they make a great mascot for the churches in town. And Rancho Guayna Vista High School would be a great, great mascot for that school. And can I see the hands of everybody from Rancho Guayna Vista here today? Yeah, it's a great mascot for your school. Thank you for being here. And hopefully you'll be on camera. We'll get somebody to sign your papers. Thank you, Humane Society, as usually. Have a good one. And the dog barked at our city manager, so it shows it has taste. Thank you.
For our final presentation this evening, we would For our final presentation this evening, we have a check presentation from the Oceanside Firefighters Association to the Wounded Warrior Project. And at this time, we'd like to call forward Brian Howell of OFA.
You gotta stand up there all by yourself. Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much, City Manager Weiss, Mr. Mull, and esteemed council members for having us. My name is Brian. I'm from the Oceanside Firefighters Association. Every year, we hold several events off of charity and I'm in charge of our golf tournament. This year was the biggest one we've had. Great success. We raised for the Wounded Warrior Project $4,000. That's huge for us. We started out just a small-time golf tournament. This year, we invited our neighbors Vista Firefighters Association. We kind of combined our efforts and together, this is the biggest amount of money we've ever raised. We are very excited to give it to the Wounded Warrior Project and look forward to having them again in the future. I'm sorry, this is Julie from the Wounded Warrior Project as well.
Pastor, you can go ahead and walk them out. We're going to move on. Thank you. For the people here from Rancho, this should be fairly short and we can sign your papers. Okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk, 21, if there's anybody.
21 are communications from the public and we have no requests.
Thank you very much. And from there, well, that appears to be it. Unless, Madam Clerk, have we forget anything?
No.
Thank you very much. A short meeting. I think we might have
Mayor, I just have one thing. We got We got an email from a school board member that we did not mention the school board and their involvement in Pro Kids Golf. So I will not mention the school board member's name, who's a former deputy city manager. I don't know if he was whining because he's the former deputy city manager or school board member, but the school board was highly involved in Pro Kids Golf.
I'm glad Mike didn't mention his name, but yes, the entire school board. The school board was there for Pro, and they were in attendance and they were very kind. For us and the people in the audience, we're going to close here, but I will tell you, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September the nineteenth, two o'clock. Before we closing, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Frank Merrifield from San Fale Street Mobile Fox in Omaha. And if I may, Madam Clerk, what?
The adjournment says workshop on Tuesday. That's been canceled. Okay.
Tuesday or Wednesday? Yeah, that's what it was, Wednesday. Thank you. Moment of silence for a good friend here, Frank Merrifield. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much and have a safe remainder of the wonderful weather in Southern California. Be safe out there. Thank you. Good night.